Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. We want to first thank Westminster Church for providing their... What do you call this room, Jonathan?
Fellowship Hall.
Fellowship Hall for our town hall meeting. And two things, I'll go ahead and get out of the way. Number one, we're in church. And number two, I've got our Chief of Police sitting right here in front of me. What we'd like to do is we're going to ask Pastor Jonathan Rockness to say a prayer, and then Barbara will lead the prayer. Please say it.
Good morning. Father, we come before you tonight, and we are thankful for the beauty of your creation and ask that we be good caretakers of it. We are thankful for your resources that you have given and that we might be good caretakers of those. We're thankful for this community, for the people that you have placed here, and ask that we could look after one another in a Christ-like fashion. Father, we confess our limitations. We don't know all the answers to the questions being asked here. We come with various agendas, and so the Lord, we ask for your wisdom as we go about this meeting and as we go about the business of Bluefield. We thank you for our public servants who show their commitment to our community through their service. Thank you also for the concerned and invested citizens that are gathered here tonight. Let us come together and have a fruitful time, that your wisdom would be upon us. We ask for your favor to be upon this community. We ask you to guide this meeting now. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please take a second for the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you all hear me okay if I'm on mute? Okay, how about that? Does that sound all right? Okay, I'm going to stand up for just a couple of minutes. I'll briefly say a few words, a little bit of housekeeping, and then I'll turn the meeting over to our city manager, Colonel Dean Rideout. First of all, thank you so much to Westminster Church. We appreciate them opening their doors to us for this town hall meeting. I want to introduce a few guests that are in the audience. And by the way, I appreciate the great turnout. Thank you all for coming out. Mike Browning with Senator Joe Manchin's office right here. Thank you. And Kimberly Gross with Governor Earl Ray Tomlin's office. And Todd Gunter. Did I say that right? This is Shelley Moore Cappertos, Senator Shelley Moore Cappertos. And I'm Tom Cole, and I'm with Senator Bill Cole, Lieutenant Governor's office. And also the mayor of Bluefield. And I'm very honored to serve the city, to have been elected, and then to have been chosen by these great folks here to serve as your mayor. We have a lot of great things going on in the city, and sometimes you've got to tell the story. And I think tonight we want to tell you a little story about what we've been up to and what we've been working on. Your five board members, I just want to say how proud I am to serve with these ladies and gentlemen here. And with the exception of near-death experiences and a memorial service, we haven't missed a meeting. This group has worked hard for you all. In addition to our regular meetings, we have work meetings that sometimes are three and four hours long. In addition to that, this is our fourth town hall meeting. Is that right? So we're working hard for you. We may not always do the right things. We may not always do what you want us to do, but I promise you, our heart is in the right place. Each of us love this city, and we're here to serve you, serve the community. And as I said, sometimes that might not be exactly in concert with you, but I think overall, when you step back and look, you can see us moving in the right direction. And I think that there's an awful lot of enthusiasm in the city and excitement that hasn't been there for a while. So we're all very excited, and on behalf of the board members and our board employees, our great attorney, Brian Cochran, Kelly Davis, our new treasurer, and I know I'm stealing your thunder, but I need to just, I want to just recognize those folks, and Bobby Kersey, our city clerk. So with that, I would ask that you hold your questions until we get through our presentation. At the end, we'll certainly take questions and we'll try and field them. And then I think at the very end, each of the directors would like to say a word or two. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dan and Josh.
Good evening. How are you all doing tonight? Okay, so this is the report card, if you will, for the last six months. First off, I want to, and this is the hard work of individuals who are sitting in this front row right here. And I'm going to introduce them real quick, so you get a chance to see what a face with what I'm about to show you what they've done. So Gerald, just stand up real quick. Joe Green is the inspector for the entire city, if you will, in my adult supervision when it comes to a lot of things. So thanks, Gerald. Junior Beggs in charge of Public Works. He owns about two-thirds of the city's organization. He's got the trash, he's got the sanitation, he's got roads and grounds, and anything that's broken, he fixes. And we spend a lot of time together, more than my wife, I think. Jeff Warden, obviously keeping us safe. He is with our first responders, with the fire department. We're going to get a chance to brag on those great Americans. Thanks, Jeff. Angie Foley, an HR professional that, unfortunately, gets solicited to most of my banter on a daily basis because we share more or less an office, but she does all the hiring, takes care of all of the administrative works and all that unsung stuff, and she's an army of one. Okay? Thanks, Gerald. Billy Hester, who is more, he's an IT guy on steroids. He's quickly been working into my operations officers, been working with the city well over 10 years, and is another one of those individuals that allows us to think at the graduate level, so thanks, Bill. Lori Mills, a lot of you know her, who is now the code enforcement supervisor, has our newest reform team, and is getting after all the code enforcement fractions inside the city. We're going to brag a lot about what she's done. Chief Dillo has a gun. And not only has he, sort of, my mentor, has been a former mentor at times, and the guy that really set a lot of this in motion as the former city manager and is also as the chief, at least, and is doing great things in Kansas City. Tony Wagner, city engineer. This guy knows exactly, he has a GPS, he's locating next to his heart, and he can tell you where a wire is within three feet, six feet underneath the ground. He does great things for us and knows everybody, so. And then Charles Riddlehugh, who comes from Bible clubs, correct? I get it. Who comes, we stole from Tazwell County YMCA, and is now bringing that no kidding graduate level experience to our parks and recreation, is about to get after a lot of programs in wellness, so welcome, Charles. And I would be remiss if not, my battle buddy, Josh Klein. This presentation started probably in October timeframe. We thought it was very important that we told our story, and like everything, Josh got stuck with it. He's on the other side of my office, and he's probably spent, there's probably well over 40 hours of his personal time and energy into making sure we capture what this city has actually done for the last six months. And so we're using the last six months because we've worked in a fiscal year. It starts on 1 July and ends on 30 June, so this data that you're about to see runs from 1 July through the 31st of December. And then we will do another one of these in six months. So real quick, where do we start off with? And it's sort of, it's sort of an interesting, anytime you come into a new organization, you've got to take a pretty good look at it, and we've done that the last six months. And please do not take away, this is supposed to be positive in nature. I will tell you, if anything I've found over the last six months is that all of the city boards before this city board were really getting after a lot of great things. And we have tried to steal all of those really great things and capitalize on those and continue the city moving forward. But I will tell you that there's a lot of whole processes out there. You've heard my mantra, you know, when I ask these guys right here, they are not allowed to ever tell me, when I ask Tony, "Why are we doing the paving plan like that?" And he can't say, "Well, boss, that's the way we've always done it." He's not allowed to say that even if I drop him for pushups now. In his age, right, he's a little bit thin. No, I mean, what they do is, they say, "Tell me why we're doing these things these ways? Give me an operational reason why. Why is this healthy and safe? Is preserving of city assets, you know, good steward of minds? Why are we doing it like this?" And we're finding that a lot of the process started with A and usually ended in G, but we could have gotten rid of all of the letters in between there because we embraced technology. And if we looked hard at our processes and we got out of our comfort zones a little bit, we found out a lot more efficient organization. So that's what we've been, we're getting after. So these guys, when I walk them into staff meetings every week, and they walk the dog on why we're doing things, that there's got to be a reason for it. Now, we're not changing anything by any means. There's a lot of great things we're doing, but we've definitely taken a hard look at processes. Okay, and then the staffing issues. If you look across, if this board has done anything, they have built a team. And if you look across this row here, and you look up what's sitting there, we have really got some great team members that are on there, and they've built a team, and now we're getting after it, and we all share a common vision, and we know where the city's going. Okay, so you've got to work small budget, coming from $170 million budget to a $10 million budget. 1,700 employees down to a little over 130 employees. And I'll tell you, it's harder. It really is harder. You know, you think of the organization that big, and it's harder, one, because these guys are intelligent among all getup. I'm learning how to speak West Virginia, y'all, holler, you know, all those things. And everything's related to everybody, so I'm trying to figure all that piece out. But what I will tell you is that it's harder than the last organization, and we're getting after it pretty well. So if you take a look at this, we have a battle rhythm now, meaning that we do things every week, and it's the same time every week, and so they're able to anticipate requirements, and we're getting after predictive analytics, capturing data, which now they're starting to see. They first got here, "Why are you asking me to capture all this information?" And now they're starting to see why, how we're applying it to processes, solutions and such. I would tell you, all of these individuals, when I set them down, we just finished our six-month review, where I sat, each one of them down, and said, "Here's the good, the bad, and the other. Okay, here's what you're doing right. Here's things you need to work on. Here are priorities for the next six months." And oh, by the way, they had to bring to me three things for me to improve on and three things for me to sustain. It was very good dialogue. And I will tell you, if anything we've done is that we've increased the communication, not only with the citizens, hopefully, you're seeing, but within the side of our employees, and we've powered down authorities at a boss, Stan McChrystal's, sort of the architect behind Killing Osama Bin Laden, who I used to work for, he said, "You have to power down authorities until it becomes uncomfortable." And so that's what we've done. Pushed down authorities until I got a little bit uncomfortable, and I pulled them back a little bit, and now these department heads are able to make decisions at a better level and get after solutions a heck of a lot faster. And I think they all feel comfortable. They all feel comfortable, they can walk in my office, say, "Boss, why are we doing this? And I think we get after it like this." I think they're part, they feel like part of the solution which has been, because I don't know what he does, you know? I'm not an engineer. I didn't sleep at the Holiday Express once. But I did, I got to know what the engineering stuff is, and when I ask, the first thing usually on my mouth when they bring me a problem, and they know to bring me a solution as well, is, "Okay, Tony, how do you think we should fix it?" "Well, boss, maybe we should do it this." "All right, let's execute." So I think they feel comfortable and that it's part of the process. And trust me, they've got left and right limits that I give them to make sure that they're about some boundaries and research authorities, but we're getting after things a lot more quickly. Okay, so technology, you know, if you want to watch something funny, you know, you've got to see Ellen when we first started giving her iPad, you know, which is probably not as funny as my kids giving me my iPhone trying to do Facebook. I mean, you know, my kids are double thumbers and they do this, or they're like this. Well, that's what we've done across the board. We came into the, and looked at the city's systems, and we were using outdated technology. One of the first things Billy brought to me was, "Boss, we've got to get a new operating system." "Well, why?" "Well, because it costs money." Just because we're using Windows 98, and they quit using, they quit using, or sending security patches six years ago, which means everybody's information in the city was at risk. Remember Sony hackers? Well, the kid next door to the city hall could have hacked into our system and fixed that. Okay, so we're, and oh, by the way, their weapons system is the computer. And if they have a faster operating system, it allows us to be a much more efficient organization. So we've gotten after that. The phone system, I'll tell you, we're going to announce the bid on this thing. This is something that's been, talking about a dinosaur that we've got in there. We pay $64,000 a year for 41 phone lines. We're about to fix that, okay? Get to a voice-over IP system that actually becomes very flexible and allows us to save a heck of a lot more time, and halutates a heck of a lot more expense. Less expensive saying tax per month a week. But this has been on the shelf for three years, but nobody ever made a decision on it. So we're getting after that. Next one, please. Okay, so if you look very closely, I've talked a lot about the first piece. Let me talk a little bit about the grounds crew. And you'll see the statistics here in a second. The city owns about 55 properties that are out there. In the summer times, they have to mow all these properties, which equates to about 1,200-something mowings that we must do. I mean, and not to mention all the properties that we, somebody has to take care of it because it just looks horrible, or it's a safety issue and such. But we are using temporary employees to get after that, to fix Mitchell Stadium, to get after Parks and Rec, you know, areas, anything that's city-owned, we're using temporary employees. They were seasonal in nature. No continuity, very expensive. We were able to take the money we were spending on temporary employees, create a grounds crew, place it underneath Public Works where it should be, so it's got the equipment, the accountability, the operational control, and we did it for less than, we did it for paying $7,000 less than we were paying for temporary employees and their full-time employees. We created jobs, and we're able to accomplish a heck of a lot more than just money. So that's pretty great power. Junior Beggs idea. He's the guy that thought that one. Okay, internship. Josh, I think our interns are here.
I was going to stand up. Two of our interns are here tonight. Melanie Crispin and Randy Pendergrass. We have started a very robust internship program, have partnered with Bluefield State College. I see Dr. Crispin here tonight as well. These are great student resources that are right here in our own backyard, and making sure that the city is leading the way in providing internship opportunities is key. The next challenge is for businesses in the area to take on those same interns. We want you all utilizing the resources of Bluefield State College. They're impressive. They have saved me so much time and energy, and they're willing to do anything that I ask them to do. And really, you could not find a more enthusiastic workforce with great ideas. Do take advantage of that. That do, before the unions, do have a chance to say hello to Melanie and Randy, just two of our interns at the city.
Thanks. Last thing is 12-hour shift. Sounds sort of easy, eight hours, 12 hours type of thing, but when you're working with the fire department and the police department, they're unionized, okay? So you have to be very careful in how you do it. But something Chief Dillo brought to us, this is something I've been looking at for quite some time. The police officers love it. The city loves it because I get effectively two more police officers per beat, and we're saving money. It's going to, the overtime costs, and we haven't realized it yet, that's the data we're collecting, but already it's paying huge dividends from our police coverage. We'll brag a little bit more about that in a second. Okay, so some critical hires. So my first, well, the first things I did when I got here was hiring Junior Beggs full-time. Chief Dillo had already put him in here, a retired first responder himself, retired firefighter himself. Talking about herding cats, okay? That's what Public Works is. And I've got a guy out there that, no kidding, is, he's got his thumb on those individuals out there who are doing great things, talking about a very complex and diverse organization, but he's getting after it. The next piece was Kevin Fleming. Junior's a great firefighter, great supervisor, but his office is his truck, and he's out all over the place, and we needed to get him a deputy. I'm a big believer and always had a plan B. If Junior wraps himself around a telephone pole, there's got to be somebody that can step into his place so that the city doesn't kind of want that. There's got to be someone, you've got to have a number two that takes care of things. But Kevin Fleming is already, he's bringing that analytical piece, bulk buying, scheduled maintenance, ensuring that we've got the next day's pickups taken care of, looking internally at your organization, making sure that we're more efficient. Charles, we just talked about earlier, I needed a Parks and Recs individual that had a graduate-level understanding of what we're trying to get after, a bachelor's in Recreation Management and a master's in Exercise Science, right? That's the type of stuff. So not just stick-in-bolt type of programs, but getting after those wellness programs, you know, the couch-to-5K type of thing. I mean, we're a very senior population in the city, so what are we doing for that population? Half the 30-somethings, how are we going after those? Charles is going to get after that piece. My partner in crime, Kelly Davis, who keeps me out of jail, which is an important thing.
She usually pays.
How are we going to pay for that? You know, clearly getting after the books, no kidding, getting, making sure we're doing things the right way. It's been a great partnership. Her and I spent a lot of time in each other's offices, making sure that the money is right, that we're being legal about it, we're very transparent with it. We just had an audit from the state and flying colors, and we're happy we stole you from Princeton. So. The other piece is on the code enforcement. I alluded to it a little earlier with Lori Mills and stuff. And the first thing that the board did was hire a code enforcement officer. I came in and said, "I need another code enforcement officer." I'm happy to say, based upon the SHOT Foundation, a very gracious gift, a good chance to see him, but our vehicles got here today, and we will actually be able to, Lori is concentrating on rental properties. I've got two code enforcement officers that split the city in two. We've put it all underneath the adult supervision between Gerald and the police chief, and it's working very well. We're actually, and we've brought on a new software that actually allows us to get away from the study pencil. We're actually now in the 21st century and in the computer age. We already talked about a lot of things. One, I really want to hit on this, professional development. I will tell you that it's important that you always are learning as an organization. That includes all of us. We, once a month, this group right here has an individual come in and provide us that graduate level, how are we understanding ourselves, how are we working together, how are we communicating, how are we getting after, how to hire the right employee, how to get after customer service, how to counsel your people and grow and nurture them, how to build a budget, how to get after strategic planning. That's the education piece that we're continuing to do, and I will tell you, it's good spring and fall building, and there's a chance for them to beat on me for a bit, so. The learning experience, that's for sure.
One of the first things that we talked about in really getting after, how do we restructure the city, how do we bring the city into the 21st century, was image. Image is important. Image is everything. We live in a very branded society, and so we thought it was very important that we have a fresh, modern perception of the local government. Most people's perception is the ratty seal that had been kind of ripped. Seal's beautiful. Long have we said that seal's ratty, but the logos, the decals were ripped, tearing on old vehicles that were falling apart didn't present a good, clean, fresh image. And that's what we want to present. So we had a new logo selected. The public was able to be involved in that. Our decals arrived today for our trucks. Business cards and letterhead are actually on their way in the very near future, and so we're really excited that we have a fresh new image that we can really put out to the public. We've also focused on communication with the public as well, and making sure that we're meeting you where you're at. Our average board dependence was six to seven members. We found in this past year, there's 10,000 people in the city. That is not a good percentage. So we found that it's important to meet people where they're at, and using social media is a great way to do that. So we've implemented new apps, Facebook and Twitter. Our strongholds for us for pushing local events. Bluefield My Mixer on the right is allowing us to ask those targeted questions to individuals, saying, "What do you think about this?", and not getting all the other clutter that comes with asking a question that you can get on sites like Facebook. FixitBluefield has been powerful for our Public Works Department and for other areas. FixitBluefield allows you to say, "Hey, I have a popple on my street." Take a picture of it, submit it right to our Public Works Department, and you'll see some stats later in the presentation about how that's been made our department more effective. The good news behind this is that if we can't get it to it right away, it creates a task order number for that project. So there's accountability for it. So you can call and say, "Hey, Dan, my popple never got filled." And we can quickly look it up, find out what the status of that is, and keep ourselves accountable. The last one that I want to share with you tonight is Heads Up, Western County. This is coming this spring. This is an initiative that our police department has headed up. No pun intended. But they've taken this app as an opportunity to be able to share with you emergency notifications. So when there's a follow-up, oil-water advisory, when there's been an accident that closes part of College Avenue, those types of things, you will get an immediate response to your phone. This was an initiative that the board wanted us to get after when they came into office, and we're really excited because not only is that becoming available, but it was paid for through a grant fund through FEMA, so that was really exciting as well.
Okay, I've talked a little bit about this, but this starts breaking down code enforcement, but they've actually been getting it. So this is sort of now the deep dive, the behind-the-scenes look, and what these employees have been doing on a day-to-day basis. And I'll let you, I'm not going to read the slides to you, but I definitely want, this is the so what behind the numbers. This is what keeps these folks busy on a day-to-day basis. Remember, every single one of those interactions, there is a personal interaction that goes along with, you know, those citizens that are out there. So this is pretty powerful. I've got to tell you, nobody does it better than Lori Mills. I've never seen anybody that's, you know, that is able to take, there's been a couple of people that want to see the city manager, you know, they're pretty hot at the city hall, and Lori is able to diffuse the situation, get to the background, has a very robust knowledge of what right was, what actions are going to take, and I got to tell you, you're doing a phenomenal job. And this is obviously some of the statistics that are out there. Okay, so if you look at the rental properties, 11, there's quite a few, almost 11, 100 rental properties that are out there. A lot of these properties, the owners don't live anywhere near this state, okay? And they buy these properties up, they do tax sales, they're putting money into it, they get as much run out of it as they can, and then they, and you have people that are living in it. "What is your code? You call it?"
Safe, Sound, Warm and Drive.
Yeah, there you go. Safe, Sound, Warm and Drive, and she walks into it. Now, when she first started doing these rental inspections, we weren't really sure what they were expecting. And she walked into them, the reaction, I think, surprised all of us, which was not, "Why are you here in my house looking at this?", but, "Thank you. Finally, there is somebody here that has authorities and the law behind them to be able to start getting after and holding people accountable so that people are safe, sound, warm and dry out there." So again, great, great work that's going on. Okay, so talking about getting after some demolition, 107 properties already, this is just this year. Gerald has been the man getting after this, and I can tell you, with the help of a grant from the SHOT Foundation, 107 properties, okay? That includes asbestos abatement, tearing them down, all of the process of going through the door, getting it onto the schedule, setting up and making sure all the utilities are disconnected, getting the crews out there, getting demolished, getting the property, you know, back to where it's, from an erosion standpoint, it's taken 107. Pretty powerful, pretty powerful job, and we're not stopping there. And we, I'll tell you, we've exhausted the list, though. And we, I'll tell you, we've exhausted the list though. Right now, there are no houses that have been passed through the building commission that are being demolished. So we are caught up, which is a great thing, great work by Gerald and of course the building commission. Next slide. One thing I didn't capture on that, on that slide, I wanted to real quick, he also has a, his day job is making sure that getting after those big events that had, those building, uh, events that happen across the city. Uh, probably the most visible right now is the Boxwood Nursing Home that's going on. How many million, seven, six, seven million dollars? We type something, they're making sure they're doing the right thing, when it comes to water and fire protection and, and sewage and all that type of stuff. Constantly out there visiting these sites, making sure that folks are doing what they're supposed to be doing, and that's what's been a lot of their time. Uh, give you a sort of snapshot of what it costs to do a house. We're doing it very inexpensively, I will tell you, it's very, very creative on how we, how we're getting after this piece, and, uh, and, and more to come on that. Couple more, more slides on there. Before and after is good. Okay, let me brag on our transit, and Pat's not here tonight, but I wonder, so I have oversight of the, of the area transit system. Um, this is a, where they were, and here in the spring, we're not bringing them out yet, uh, two of the new vehicles are here, uh, the new transit, city transit vehicles. Let me give you a couple statistics on, on what they do there. This is, this, this right here, and just some pictures, I wanna show you those of our, we got a chance for our manager to go up there and visit the, the actual new, uh, buses. Next slide, please. Would you believe this? Number two in the state, okay? Number two in the state for ridership. Number one for non-medical, for non-medical, uh, medical, medical transport. And that's powerful, absolute power. And when people think transit, it's not just Bluefield, it's Preston, it's Berser County, it goes far up, it's Concord. And I'll tell you, Pat and his guys worked this and, and do a heck of a job making sure that people have transportation in and around this county. Those, those two buses you saw, just to give you an idea, we'll peek in under, you know, under the wizard's knees here, we are looking down the road for cost savings measures, and we make sure that those vehicles are capable of being converted to natural gas very quickly. So one of these days when, when gas comes back to where it probably should be, or, you know, where we're all used to, we're gonna, we're gonna go down the natural gas aspect. Great team. Number one mechanic was recognized this year. Got a chance to do that at the West Virginia Public Transit, Transit Association. Okay, recycling. Josh, why don't you go ahead, too?
Sure. Go ahead. Just wanted to give you an update on our recycling totals, where we're at. We're seeing increased, uh, participation, and I'll tell you, I went up for our REAP grant award this year, and, and our program has a great reputation in the state, and Nelson's is to really be commended for that. Uh, this year, uh, we averaged 20.4 average tons a month, and we collected, uh, 2,407 pounds. Really impressive numbers. We've increased in our households, but we've also increased in our businesses. We're really happy that grants has become a new partner for us in our recycling program, and really, I, I think they're responsible for a bulk of those new recycling numbers that you see for this year. But do know that it's continuing to grow and programs still available. If you're not recycling, uh, do call City Hall, and they would love to, they hate to visit. It's free.
Okay, so I, I think I covered a lot of this that was out there, but the important piece that you walk away, ah-ha moment you walk away is that Billy Hester monitors this on a daily basis, and that we have put plans in place, we've put procedures in place, and we've put technology in place, so that, that taxpayers' personal information is now secured. It's been secured, it was one of the first things we did. Matter of fact, the board, the first board meeting we had immediately obligated the money, allowed us to go out and be able to fix that, so kudos to Billy. It's all the behind the scenes stuff you just never see. Now, this is where we get to the technology piece. So I talked about the code enforcement piece, and I didn't want, I've only, we only have three code enforcement officers, if you, if you will. I expanded that a little bit to include animal control, uh, you know, that goes in there. But, but what's important about this is, is that's their new office. Those Jeep Cherokees just arrived, and that was paid for by the SHOT Foundation. Went to them and said, "This is, this is, this is sort of where my Achilles heel is right now, I need help." Not only did they help there, but they're, they have their mobile offices. So now they're connected with an iPad, a mobile printer, and a comcade, uh, uh, software that allows them to do everything they need to do. So no longer do they have to study pencil it. They can go from location to location, and, and it's entered into the system. They can issue a citation on the spot if they need to. They can do the data that they need to get into the, the background on it if anybody asks questions, but they can do their jobs from their vehicles on a very rapid and timely pace. Uh, the board just allowed, loudly on the last, which is not on this slide, is that we're gonna be putting GPS in city vehicles, which allows me to do a lot of things with efficiencies, ensure that people are where they're supposed to be doing. Uh, think about the, think about how the Public Works guys and the trash trucks are gonna love it, so that when somebody calls up and says, "Hey, listen, you trash, you guys didn't pick up my trash on the street today," I can go back and follow the breadcrumb, where, and I can know how long I stopped at each location, and what you'll probably find out is that you got one of your trash out, and they wanted us to know, and now I can verify, or we did miss that entire street. Now we'll have some nice discussions on how we're gonna affect that, and then, and we'll go back and fix it. But a lot of, a lot of good misfits, and it's also a LoJack system, you know? Someone goes and steals something out of their vehicle, some of this stuff. Okay, so the HR side.
Josh?
If you'd like.
No? No. Uh, kudos go to Angie. Angie has been a part of one for some time now, and there's so much more than just all the city behind the scenes that comes with a, a healthy HR department. Uh, Angie's really been making sure that we have all our proper documentation in place so that, uh, when employee issues arise, lawsuits arise, things like that, we're able to provide documentation quickly. Uh, we're also innovating our hiring practices, making sure that, uh, we're doing things in a very ethical, very moral, uh, way, and making sure that we're bringing folks in the right way, and we're doing good, uh, hiring processes. Dave's talked a little bit about training for the department heads, but we're also looking at training for folks as far down as the guy that's riding on the back of the garbage truck. What does he need to do? His job safely and effectively. And we're going to be diving in a little bit further. This first six months has, have been busy, but the next 12 months are really gonna be even busier. We're gonna look at assessments for every individual in the city, how they're doing their jobs, that we have active job descriptions, and making sure that, uh, we're recognizing our key employees. Through this presentation tonight, you'll see, uh, that we've tried to end each department with a thank you to an employee that's made a difference. Recognizing our city employees that work hard is something that's important to us, and we wanna make sure we give credit where credit's due on a daily basis.
Okay, so, I have one city engineer, and, and probably talk about throwing rocks in someone's rock, rucksack, it's been telling me, because there's a lot of things to fix. Didn't break overnight, I'm sure he's had time to fix it. Tony keeps coming, "Okay, boss, what's the priority? What do we got?" Well, I'm gonna tell you that, that this guy is E F H, I had a chance to witness him up with District 10, uh, which is really who, who, uh, he's fallen underneath for a lot of, a lot of areas. And when Tony speaks, people listen, and he's got a great reputation. This is one of those things you just can't go and hire off the street. You can't replicate, you can't train, you know, it's, it's a life of experience, and if not a valuable member on this team, it's great. One of the things that he is getting after is this project right here. This is the Martin Luther King Bridge kind of project that's gonna happen. Very unique, uh, bridge building, they're gonna build it, it's, it's a rector set, they're gonna build pretty quickly. We're gonna close that thing down for about three months, and build a, tear down a bridge, and put a new bridge up. And Tony is my liaison with those individuals getting after that piece. Other piece is, he keeps, anytime anybody does anything inside the city, there's gotta be somebody from the gold supervision, is making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and not destroying things. And we don't, the only infrastructure that the city owns would be stormwater, okay? So, power, gas, water, all owned by other entities, sewage, all owned by other entities. But there's gotta be somebody that's making sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, and also making sure that there's coordination. Talking about, talking about an individual who says, "Hey, boss, they're gonna be doing X, Y, or Z. We could save monies if we were to do stormwater upgrades we need to do, or when they've got the, when they've got the, the vaults open, drop conduit in there, so one of these days put in high-speed, you know, fiber optics." And this is, this is what Tony's doing on a daily basis. And a lot of times, these guys will walk up and say, "Okay, Tony, the maps don't show us this. What are your bones telling you?" You know, and he'll say, "Well, there's this, this, this." And sure enough, you know, usually he's accurate with about six inches, so it's pretty, pretty good stuff. So, and of course, you're seeing a lot of the visible stuff that Tony's doing around the city. Okay, Public Works. Uh, ta, take a look at the numbers. It's pretty staggering up there, but if you take a look at the numbers that are up there, what these guys do. No one saw the two guys that spent the entire night last night driving around keeping our roads clean. Nobody saw, you know, no, no one see, you see them occasionally, but when it's raining, it's nasty, it's cold, and these guys are hanging off the back of these trucks, you know, that, in this cold weather, picking up your trash, providing those essential services. One of the first things we got here is, is Junior came to me and says, "Boss, I need to, I need to take care of my guys, I need to protect my guys." They didn't have, they didn't have steel-toed shoes, they didn't have safety equipment, they were wearing their own clothes, okay? The city wasn't providing them. Now you see them out there with, with very reflective vests, they've got the, they've got the, the insulated stuff, you know, to keep them out of the, out of the weather, steel-toed boots that are insulated, they've got one for the, the weather and one for the summer, gloves. I know this all sounds like common sense stuff, but common sense sometimes isn't common, okay? And, uh, and so, Junior's a leader out there, you know, taking care of these guys, and look what they're accomplishing. Okay, everybody asks, you know, we, we, you may not see all of the paving, you may not see all of the, all of the stuff, we're gonna, we're gonna show you the slide, and a little bit to show you what they do. We've got in-house capability, we can do electrical, we can do concrete, we can do paving, we can do, do our own in-house maintenance. You're gonna see here, you're gonna see a statistic here in a second. I watched a, a, one of his mechanics do two things. One, they fixed the, the, the steering knuckle on a large piece of equipment, I don't know what it's called. Um, the estimate was for $17,000, his guys, and 30 days, and his guys fixed it for $400 and in three days. That's a cost savings to the, to the, to the city, okay? In all other way, we were paying them $10 an hour. And, and I asked the guy, I said, "Why do you do this?" And, and this is the same guy that crawled up under the garbage truck, who was welding the frame, because the garbage truck is falling apart. And I said, "What's all that white stuff on you?" And those were maggots. Okay? And this is what we're asking them, and I said, "Go." And I said, "Why do you do this for $10 an hour?" And he says, "Well, one, for the benefits. And two, it says, 'Boss, as soon as the job opens up at this other location, I'm paying 15 bucks an hour, I'm gonna, I'm leaving.'" So what do you think we did? He's making 15 bucks an hour. All right, so, they're also getting after a lot of things after there, and I'll tell you, do the next slide, real, real, real points of them out. Salt. Vision, okay? Everybody else is scrambling for salt. The entire nation is scrambling for salt, but not Bluefield. Because we've got guys that went forward in Foxhole and said, "We need this," and were able to forget, and we've got what we need for the years. Look, look what they're doing. You don't, you don't, you don't see this stuff, but this is the roads crew, this is the street crew, these are the guys that are out there. So next time you see these, these guys hanging off the truck, or, or fixing a pothole, or, you know, hanging up, you know, all the flowers and watering the flowers and, and fixing street signs and, 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 you know, picking up trash, just go and pat on the back and say, "Thanks. Thanks for working." Uh, because they, they make this thing look great. Couple of the things that were up there. Uh, holiday lights, the first time I ever saw it, it was pretty, pretty great this year, it really was. And, uh, and, and Matt Perdue and Nick Harrison, you know, that two-man crew, talking about putting that thing together, changing light bulbs and getting after it, did a fantastic job this year, and you'll see a picture of them in a second. Okay, matter of fact, that's Nick Harrison and, and, and Matt Perdue right there, we were able to recognize them in front of the, in front of the board. FixitBluefield, I will tell you that Junior hates it, you know? Uh, you know, I think, you know, Junior, watching, watching the flip phone come out of Junior and Tony's hands were probably, you know, they thought that I would, I, you know, sent them to the, the gallows, you know? Take away my flip phone, you know? Now they have the technology, and here's what FixitBluefield allows us to do, and here's what the GPS is gonna allow us to do. So you enter something on FixitBluefield, we found out the way we weren't able to communicate with our leaf trucks. You know, you think you call them, cell phone call, they can't hear it, you know, it's been, been through these things. Now they have a GPS that sits on top of their dashboard, so that as Fixit, as, as you said, my, my leaves are ready to be picked up, and they're already one block, they already got your block, but you're late, Mike, as usual. And, and now they're able to go back and say, "Here, pick up my leaves." He can send a note to that truck that's the closest located to it. They'll see it, they'll hit one button, they'll give them the most efficient route to get there and go prosecute Mike's leaves because he was late. Okay, you see what I'm saying? Same thing with potholes, same thing with all the, making, you don't, I don't have more people, so I gotta make them more efficient and make them more flexible. Okay, nothing but, obviously, uh, we, we love, we love the police. I'll tell you that I'm pretty, you know, prejudiced here. I think that, uh, we've got probably the best police force, you know, if not in state, uh, you know, I, I've ever seen. I came from a police force, about 135 police officers. And we're doing 22, 22, 22 police officers, AKA, it's like going to Afghanistan, is what Chief Dillo explains to me. Come to Bluefield, spend two years in Bluefield, it's like seven years someplace else, because you see it all. I mean, you see it all, from prostitution to, you know, to your routine tickets to, you know, Adams right there, talking about a bulldog. This guy gets after violent crimes, gets after, and this is the guy that, that got the bicycle robber, or the bicycle bandit, you know, type of thing. But that's what these guys do, they send things out and they, and they go after and get it. Look, look at them, and they really are getting after their pieces. And I don't want to make sure, make, make it clear, thing clear here, but I told the, the fire chief, I'd say, as I reorganized, okay, we looked at across the board, how can we do things more efficient, stuff, I stalled his parking person and made that space the deputy public works, I mean, that, that was more important. And we, we agreed, so, okay, his police officers, especially this 12-hour shift, could cover down on more of the, of the, uh, on certain things, but we needed to push off some of the other duties. By law, the fire department is allowed to enforce, uh, fire, fire lanes, hydrants and stuff like this. I screwed up. I did not realize how overtasked the police off, the police department was, and when we gave it to the fire department, who got after it very quickly, I didn't realize how much we were not enforcing fire lanes and fire hydrants, because you could see what we were taking care of, type of thing. So I messed up, I should've communicated that better, didn't realize how, I mean, talking about a lot of upset people because we, "I parked there for 20 years, you know? You brought that fire hydrant, so..." So, anyway, great job, and then great job by the police department.
I'd like to start by giving a lot of credit to, uh, Air Parks and Recreation Department for really hosting a lot of folks. Air Parks and Recreation Department is sometimes the face of Bluefield for a lot of folks coming in for the first time. Uh, these are just some of the events that we've had for the past year. Air Ridge Runner, I wanna comment on that, Lori. Uh, it's celebrated its 50th year this year. These are things to celebrate in Bluefield, and Air Parks and Recreation Department is really worried about doing that. Uh, we've been in an interim state until Charles arrived recently. Uh, I, I really want to recognize Sean Martin for the hard work that he did as the interim director of that department. He really kept things rolling and did a great job there, but, uh, these are all big events, and, and their two-person department, their two-person department really handled, uh, planning a lot of these things. One of the things that's come out of separating and making sure efficiencies are there is maintenance is now all held by Junior Beck, freeing up our Parks Department to really Bringing up Air Parks Department to really spend their time focusing on events and bringing them in. As you can see, events are held throughout the year, and we've had some really great staples that we just wanted to recognize and say, "Thank you for partnering with Parks Recreation." Little Jimmy Christmas, the Bluefield Chex Society, our retired rail riders for Rails Fest, and our Bluefield Elk Watch. Also, congratulations to Drew Ma, Denver, who was the American Legion Citizen of the Year this year for her work with veterans in her area and all that she's done for them.
Okay, the fire department. Guys putting their lives on the line every day, working with some pretty old equipment. But take a look right there. You thought, okay, we've had tunnel fire once on Blue Moon, now we've had two tunnel fires since they've been out there. You'll see that, I see them every day, just for some reason, my office is right underneath the fire, or right atop the fire department, and I see them responding to all of these incidents across the area. Not to mention all of the usual aid that they do. This is a thankless job, twenty-four-seven, doesn't matter what it is, with very archaic equipment. I will tell you that one of the things that Jeff and I really talked about is, is I've got firefighters fixing fire equipment to save monies. We saved, had one firefighter who was able to replace one of the jacks on one of our ladder trucks and saved the city quite a bit of money.
Four thousand dollars.
How much?
Four thousand dollars.
Four thousand dollars, just because of the in-house type of work that the fire department's doing. We need to really show them some love. I will tell you that one of the things that the city board is gonna be looking at over the next six months is our fees. Our fire fees, we bring in about, we're about short about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. So we're taking eight hundred thousand dollars a year from other places to just pay for the fire department. Newest truck, seven years old, over a hundred, two hundred thousand miles. I mean, we sort of want them to have the right equipment, best equipment. You know, remember, we have a big fire plant in churches here, they vacuum it by two hundred people. So it was great work for the fire department, so.
Just a quick update on where are we financially? To date, to December 31st, we had collected four million eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in revenue, and we had only spent four million six hundred and one thousand. So you can see that we're doing all right, our collections are good right now. Truly kudos, good to Kelly and her department for the work that they've done in making sure that we have an accurate financial picture. It's been a problem that our department heads have faced in the past, and we're really giving the board an accurate picture to work with, and it's something that is kind of important when you're trying to make big decisions with taxpayer dollars. Just a breakdown of that, what that looks like. Fifty-three percent of those revenues have been collected in the form of taxes. And Warren being one of those types of things. Fines and forfeitures are at seven percent, licenses and permits, you'll see here down here at five percent. Charges for services, special trash pickup, things like that, are there at twenty-four percent. So on the other side of that, how we spend our money. We spent thirty percent of that on just general government running. How do we run the city? Department needs things like that. Public safety, our fire department, police department, code enforcement department, those folks are in the thirty-seven percent. You'll see there, streets and transportation, health and sanitation, and culture and recreation, all are about the same winding out those areas. We're continuing to look at the financial picture of the city. As Dan said earlier, we had a good audit this past year, and we're looking forward to in the next few months taking an even deeper look and correcting the way that we've done things and making sure that we're following what the state says is imperative and critical in how we spend our monies. And that way, we won't make very informed decisions. It costs to save, it costs to save these issues.
Yeah, so the, everything is about money. When it boils down to it, you pay us, make sure that we're spending monies properly, we're looking at ways to gain efficiencies and stuff. And I'll tell you, while the budget we just showed you looked like we were doing, okay, that was a snapshot in time. What the city's not doing is we are not doing any capital re-improvements. We are not investing in our infrastructure. We have been a very caretaker city for the longest of times. And so while it looks good there, there are, this board has some very tough decisions to make in the future on, are we gonna set conditions so that we are going to be a progressive city? So we increase property values, so that we, so we create an environment for other businesses to come, you know, be part of Bluefield. I gotta tell you, I'm very concerned, I saw Steve back here, stormwater concerns. It's very old, it's failing all over the place. Our newest stormwater vehicle is out here, the Shaw Foundation bought for us, and I gotta tell you, I'm very, I'm very, it's always on the top of my mind, but here's some of the things that we did look at. So abandoned vehicles. We were paying somebody else to, we did all due process, and a banned vehicle was notified. We found a banned vehicle, and those monies were leaving, were not going back to the city. They were going to somebody else's pockets and stuff. That was done by Kevin Fleming, who said, "Hey, boss, why don't we do things a little bit different?" You can see what it's doing. Phone savings, we talked about that a little bit earlier. We should've made this decision three years ago, but we didn't, and it's something that would've been paid for by now. Dog registrations, everybody think of the registry of dogs, you know, both the city and the county. People are actually starting to do it now, that's great. Energy audit, one of the first things that Tony grabbed and said, "Boss, we use a lot of energy. We need to get ADP to come in here and tell us where we can fix things." If I was king for a day, and working with ADP right now to fix our streetlight tariff, we are going to convert all of our streetlights to LEDs eventually. Give you an example, Boston did it, and they're saving about three point eight million dollars a year electricity. If we do it, after the return on investment, there are potential savings in there, up to a half a million dollars. We're not just paying for an amount of electricity just by putting in LED streetlights. An energy audit did things, Key Dan was paying innocent amounts of money out there. There's all kinds of other places where we can save monies by being more energy efficient. And we already talked about the police department. Okay, so it's been in our code for years, but the lawyer pointed this out to us. When you have a car accident and the fire department responds, most cities charge, go back to the insurance, you never see it, you, the individuals in the accident, but they go back and the cities or municipalities give your insurance companies a bill. We haven't been doing that. And so now the fire department is gonna get after that, along with the treasury department, and that's what we're gonna start doing. And what that'll, here's the sort of so what. So I'm going to the city board now for the next board meeting, and we've talked to them about this, and of course, they had sort of the same response going, "What? Not doing what?" And that's gonna allow us to get rid of, hopefully, other fees that we shouldn't be paying for. You pay fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents for a vehicle fire fee. On top of your fire fees, most of the fire fees, fire, we didn't, they aren't even listed, but we put it on the tax. So I'm going back to the board and saying, "I think that we, the staff, think that that's not a very fair thing, and they're gonna make a decision on, hopefully, your insurance." Because what we should be doing is going after insurance companies for the monies and paying for the services. And a lot of times, they sponsor the marked residents of Bluefield who are from other places. So your taxpayers' money's been paid, so we're gonna fix that. Kelly is, you know, she's, I told her she has to hang things up in the office, and she's got stacks of papers and stuff. As she's wiggling through things, how many business owners do we have in the room, explain? Okay, so we've got a lot of people, there's a lot of businesses inside the city, and, you know, no one wants to hear this, they're operating without business license, which means they're also not paying B and O. And then you've got business people that are operating, you know, look, I know two business owners up here that are, have business license, that are paying B and O, and we have not done an audit in eight years. And so we're gonna go after, make people do what they're supposed to be doing, and we think that's gonna help the revenue as well. And we are talking about the grants, too.
Just wanna quickly highlight on some of the grants that we've received this year. Dan's talked about the generosity of the UIC Shaw Foundation, really are appreciative. This is the stormwater van that will have, Steve is here tonight, here you are, Steve. Steve has the decal that's gonna go across the, you take a look at that, it's pretty fancy. And then our code enforcement officers. The June Shaw Foundation was very generous with a gift of forty thousand dollars to put bleachers on our tennis courts in City Park. This, we're hoping, will allow us to host tournaments, provide a nice venue for not only our high schools to play, but our colleges are playing here in City Park as well. And we wanna make sure that we're providing a really nice venue for those types of things. Bluefield State, if you don't know, has an outstanding tennis program, which took away a nice championship last year. And we were very impressed with them. So we wanna give those nice areas there. And again, there's a generosity of local foundations, these things are important. Just some of our other grants, quickly. I mentioned our recycling grant, this goes to help pay for our recycling program to exist. That way, the city's not having to find those monies to make it up. Heads up Mercer County was paid for by a grant. We also had mobile radios for our police department. And holiday lights contributions, which helped us get after really making a nice display, which is a nice tourism and really a cherished family memory for a lot of folks in our area. Okay, so economic development, we'll hit on that pretty quickly. New businesses, we wanna welcome and say thank you for doing business in Bluefield. That's something we're very conscious to say, is thank you for being here. These are folks that have started up and located in Bluefield. We also have a number of businesses that have made an expansion. And please note that I have captured everyone here, these are just a quick selection of some folks that have made impacts in their own businesses and done major remodels or are looking at expanding. So I wanna say thank you to them. Something as simple as just painting your building like State Electric Supply and Interior Motives did, really makes a difference. And again, it spruces up a local environment, and we're thankful for those businesses and the investments that they're making here. Another great tool that we have in Bluefield now is the West Virginia Small Business Development Center. It's located at Bluefield State College. This is an outstanding organization. If we have someone that calls my office saying, "Hey, I wanna put a business in Bluefield," Harold is the first person that I send them to. The city's great to be able to help and partner in final locations. Harold is the connection for business plans, putting a marketing plan together, but also saying, "Hey, how are we gonna finance this business? How are we gonna make sure that it runs the way it needs to?" This, you do not know what a goldmine this is for us to have located right in Bluefield. So if you see Harold, and he's gonna be out and about, meeting folks in Bluefield in the next few weeks, do make him feel welcome, and if you're interested in starting a business, his number is there. And again, he's located right on Bluefield State's campus, again, another goldmine opportunity.
I wanna talk a little bit about infrastructure stuff. We've partnered very closely with each of these companies, and we've talked to them on a regular basis, making sure that their products and their expansion and their work on our facilities is completely integrated with the city's. Making sure that we rip up, we just pave a road and then turn right around and have, you know, you know, the gas company come and rip that road back up, there's a need to go there and steal the PVC. So we're fixing all that, and they're getting after the infrastructure stuff. Here are a couple of things that I don't think people realize, we're gonna make sure you understand the bigger picture of this. Appalachian Power's about to dump a lot of money, a lot of money in a set of power lines. One set of power lines that comes into the city that powers a lot of this area here. It's sitting about sixty-nine kilovolts right now, okay? So energy security is very important, and being able to expand is something that businesses look at to make sure that we've got enough power. And I will tell you, they shut down all these coal-fired plants right now, and they're, you know, the level of concern is whether they can power. For us to have a set of power lines that are about to go from sixty-nine kilovolts, kilovolt amps, to a hundred and thirty-eight, okay? This means big businesses, big power lines, no longer, when people come in, what do you mean? Economic drivers, they look at very closely at infrastructure, making sure that power, water, sewer is available, and this is a very good new story. The only thing I ever saw when this was announced was that somebody immediately said, "Well, they go our rates, they're going up." And they're missing the bigger picture. They are, this right here is setting Bluefield up for success, the bigger companies to come into this area because the infrastructure's gonna be in place. So make sure that, you understand, there's more to it, and that's the partnership we have with these utility companies. Paving. Now, I put the hold on paving for this year. The weather was pretty wet, you know, wet summer and stuff like that. I would rather do it right. We're gonna spend the money, let's do it right and not have a shiny product, you know, product. So Tony came to me and said, "Boss, I think we need to delay this." Probably not the most popular thing at the time, but what we will do is we will have a better product in the end. So this gives you an idea of the paving plan, trying to bring us the industry standard, which is one every twenty-five years. The plan is right now is to get after this paving piece. We build a comprehensive plan, and I go to the board. Part of that piece will be to expand that paving, instead of doing one mile a year, I eventually wanna get three, four, five miles a year of paving, and finally catch up and get back after this. He also, this gets back to the relationship piece that he had with District Ten. We've got almost, how many feet was, it was?
Two thousand eighty-one.
Two thousand?
No, fourteen oh-two.
Fourteen hundred feet, then we got District Ten to pay for them. That was like half our paving for last year they paid for, so thank you, District Ten. Okay, so sidewalks. I had, again, with king for a day, the sidewalks are horrible. Now, College Avenue used to be, what I understand, is the place to run up and dance, but since I've been here, we've got the Boston Fever, your employees, and a broken arm, and they're just horrible. Years ago, the city built the sidewalks, especially in the residential areas, and then they gave them back to the residents. Well, it's not really a big plan. And then on top of it all, we've been trying to go on the cheap. We haven't been milling our roads, we've just been paving on top of it, we need to get curbs about that big, okay? And so the stormwater guys love it, because everything comes into the street now, goes down and clog, it's just horrible type of piece. We're getting after it. A lot of in-house, this is in-house sidewalks that we're doing right now. This is all done by our guys, and we're slowly getting after this piece. I'm a big stormwater guy, just because I lived it and breathed it at West Point, and I grabbed Steve, and Steve, why a stormwater camera? Because Steve's guys were actually going into tubes underneath the ground with an iPhone and taking pictures. That's what we were asking our employees to do. Rats, sewage, nasty stuff down there, and that's how we were finding out where our stormwater issues were. Shaw Foundation now has given, provided us monies, have the stormwater camera, now you have this, now we'll be able to figure out what worst first is. I would say this stuff is just collapsing. Ellen, her dad's house on Oakhurst, everything was fine and dandy, and then one day, there was sort of a small sink hole in his front yard. That was stuff that we just don't, we just don't plan on fixing. That was a well over ten thousand dollar fix because it just collapsed. And so these guys are getting after it. We're putting emphasis on the comprehensive plan, cleaning out storm basins, education program. He had an intern that came and actually found more storm basins than we actually thought we had, went through all of the storm basins, and quoted them and said, "Which ones are worst, and which ones we need to get after?" And Steve and his team has got a heck of a plan put together, as we're gonna try to fix these stormwater issues. We go, "Why, well, let's still think about stormwater." Well, it affects flooding basements, it takes away a lot of the, you know, you've seen the road networks that we've got. I called the chief of police the other night, about nine o'clock at night, and said, "Hey, I need to drive over this road, and I think we have a little problem there. This car almost went into it, a small sink hole because it just had collapsed, and it took you guys most of the week to fix that, to fix that stormwater base." Anyway, you just can't make this stuff up. I mean, it's old, old pipes, and it's failing across the, but we've got a plan to get to. Sanitary Board, I think there is a board that gets out, I'm not bragging these guys a little bit. Take a look at the numbers up there, it's good, you can do a quick math. It's over four million dollars over the last four years, that they have upgraded our sanitation. And I'll tell you, it's phenomenal work out there, standard equipment, backup generator systems they've got out there, remote monitoring, which is pretty powerful. If anybody asks, you know, you go out into Leatherwood, and you always see this, you know, Bluefield, Virginia's always talking about the Leatherwood piece up there. A million dollars just to get sanitation out over that property and stuff. So we're, so this is not a cheap, a cheap type of, something to get after. And you sort of want the sanitation piece taken care of, and our sanitation board, I mean, Shannon, has done a phenomenal job of getting after, looking for city improvements. And like I said, businesses, if people look at these very closely, what's the condition of our sanitation in this previous year?
All right, so what are some future areas that we wanna explore? And let me start by saying, economic development, yes, it's the business that locates on Cumberland Road and things. But some of the things that we wanna look at are the bigger picture items. What are going to be drivers for business in our area? What's going to be important? We wanna talk about CNG. Right here, it's not as sexy as it was because gas prices are down, but I think that's just a blur. We really wanna look into a CNG fueling station here in Bluefield. The governor's report on CNG fueling is a great read if you like that kind of thing, like I do, I'm kind of a geek in that way. But it really is the way for us to be very efficient in fuel, where you can save a But it really is the way for us to be very efficient in fuel, where you can save a business that maybe does transportation, $250,000 a year in fuel costs. That's money that they can put back into their people, back into their infrastructure and back into the community, and that's what we want to offer. We also want to look at a bulk transfer terminal with our rail yard. Bluefield was built on the rail and we still think there's a lot of viability in that, in our rail yard here in Bluefield. This is a terminal in Somerset, Kentucky, one that we're looking at and exploring, so we want to look at what options are available there. That'll allow us to really focus on industries and warehousing, transportation, and be able to focus on maybe creating good solid jobs, jobs with benefits, jobs that we really are desperate for here in Southern West Virginia. We also are looking at the Bluefield State College student housing picture. Bluefield State has completed a master plan. I do encourage you to look at it. There are some great future endeavors that are going to be taking place there. One of the ideas that we're exploring and partnering with our Housing Development Authority here in Bluefield is the possibility of taking Tiki Manor and turning that over into student housing and building new affordable housing in Bluefield, seeing what partnerships we can build there. That is the quickest win to make Bluefield State a on-campus residential college. That's the number one thing in the master plan that alumni, donors, community members shared with, what will make Bluefield successful. And it was all about student housing. Building a dormitory is the chief. I've got David Olive was here just a moment ago. Dorms are expensive endeavors, but this is a quick win and this is something we want to explore. It's not going to be an easy project, but it's something we want to continue to look at and see if there are possibilities there. We've been very thankful, our partners at the federal level are beginning to work with us on this project, so we're excited to see where that could take us. Signage off I-77, a local business owner, that's been one of his number one things that he shared with me since I started in my job with the city, is making sure people know how to get off of the interstate and get into Bluefield. And so we're going to be looking into that a little bit more. Kimberly's been great to help us and have conversations from Governor Conlon's office, and so we'll be looking at that a little bit more in the next few months. Other ideas that we're talking about and working with, with the board, are a business incentive package. What makes Bluefield an enticing place to locate for a business? What do we offer them? Right now, our only incentive is that we offer a graduated VNO scale for new businesses. So your first year, you don't pay a VNO tax, second year you pay a percentage, and then it's a graduated step from there. Energy savings, performance contracts, I'm going to come back and let you talk a little bit about that. Shovel-ready sites. We've had a couple of meetings with folks at the Department of Commerce, and the number one thing that we've been told is have building-ready sites ready for companies to look at. The railroad told us the exact same thing. Building-ready sites for these companies to locate. We have a lot of old buildings in Bluefield, very much like other parts of the state, and so we're really going to get after using Land Reuse Agency and Taxcel participation, being able to pick these buildings, clear the site, make sure we have a place that businesses can locate. I had a gentleman tell me when I started that business goes where business is welcome, and we really want to make sure that we're welcoming them and providing a ready site where they can locate and build what they need for an energy-efficient building and really making it tailored to what they need. Really quickly, Land Use Agency. You've heard it called land banking. That's kind of a new term in the state. There's been some great folks that have worked on this. The Cityville Huntington is a great example if you want to do some groundwork on that. This agency, when we created, will allow us the ability to get after residential and commercial property issues in the city and make sure that we can take maybe that property where we had a house torn down this year, talk to the property owners close by and say, "Hey, would this benefit you? Maybe they can put a driveway in or build a garage and get some off-street parking. Maybe they lengthen their lot, increases the property values." These are good news stories, things that we want for our property owners in the city. And Taxcel's participation is something we've already done. Lori Mills and I went to our Taxcel. This is where our landlords are people that we don't want buying their properties that aren't friendly city or maybe they're just not taking care of the people that live there. We're showing up and participating in these cells and sending a clear signal that, you know, the city's very invested in what's going on and we're not going to take somebody coming in and just, oh, maybe I'll buy this property, oh, I don't like it, and then let it sit until it goes back on the Taxcel a couple of years later. We're making sure that we're sending a very clear signal that we're participating and we're involved in the process. So these are our areas. Dave, do you want to talk about energy savings?
Last thing, energy savings performance contracts is the graduate level of how do you pay for major infrastructure type of improvements in areas of energy? Streetlights, cogeneration of electricity, alternative energy sources, if you will. Companies come in, you provide them the land, you provide them the access. As a matter of fact, I just read in the paper someplace in here in West Virginia, they just put in a 30-megawatt solar, long-term land lease with the city. And now, the city is now buying their energy from that, from that, those solar panels at a much lower rate than what they were paying for. They didn't have to put a dime out, they got energy for a much cheaper rate and everybody sort of wins, if you will. Some big companies come in and taking care of, putting in controls and putting in those type of areas. We're going to look at it closely for energy savings for the streetlights. Okay, so that's where we are. Now where are we going? I'm almost finished here. I know I'm a little bit, it takes a while getting six months of stuff out there. So we sat down with the board and said, "Okay, so where do we, where do we go from here? We need to, we need to focus on a theme that's all about enhancing property values." We picked eight things on there that really we want to accomplish in the next six months. And I want to talk about, if you take, real quick, on-the-spot citations and disposition of state property, those were home rule initiatives that we were able to get after. Brian is crafting up the language as we speak on this piece. Josh has talked a little bit about the land, the land retention piece. We talked already about the paving piece that we want to get after pretty heavily. Maryland, we've all been on that, pretty nasty intersection, you know? And it was one of the first places during my interview process that the mayor grabbed me and said, "We've got to fix this." And so we are, we are in the process right now of having an architectural firm look at it real quick to make sure, what does right look like? What are the possibilities? We're going to go to the board with it and hopefully we explore it. That intersection is easily fixed. I mean, it's one of those things you drive by, I have someone to do something about it. Well, we're going to do something about it, and we're going to figure out how to get, how to get after that piece. Recreational facilities. And I'm going to show you a couple of pictures here. Sometimes they're popular and not the most popular type of things. And I told the board, we've got to listen to factual type of arguments and not who's loudest, okay? So it's very important that we can get after. We've got some great recreational facilities out there that have just fallen into disrepair. We've got Holiday Lights building that someone gave us the money for, but we've never executed. So meanwhile, we're putting Holiday Lights stuff all over the place. We're going to build a dog park. We're going to build a dog park that's going to be the flagship, if you will, of our parks. It's going to be, we had an architect come in, we're going to show you some pictures here in a second what it looks like. Dog parks bring property values up. They're great. People look to buy homes near dog parks. It's great socialization with your dogs, you know? It's a great, it's, you know, it's a great thing. Everybody says, I've heard from toxic waste to a bunch of other things that are out there. I couldn't build enough dog parks in my last, in my last installation because, because this is how, this is what the homeowners look for. Wait till you see it, it's going to be gorgeous, and then we'll get after that piece. The fee consolidation and business license piece, the fees I told you, they're not right. There's too many of them, they're all over the place, it's too hard to pay them. I have one business owner just say to me, "I've never in my life found it so hard to give the government plan." That's City Bluefield, we're going to fix that piece. The business license is horrible, it's just, it's just hard to do. We're going to automate that thing from a line. Next slide. Okay, so here's a, here's a deep dive into a couple of them. So let's, real quick, on the dog park piece, give you an idea, this is going to go up between, yeah, Rockford and Shandell, the old Fairview School. Brad Cross, Brad Cross in your house, okay? But I'll tell you, driven up there probably six or seven times, and I find condoms, hypodermic needles, beard hands. The chief of police can tell you about how much problems they've got up there. We're going to, we're going to put in a state-of-the-art dog park, separate, large dogs, small dogs, you know? Beautiful fountain in the middle of it, you know? Right now, already have certain donors that have come forward. Any of it, we're still looking for more donors. The intent is, is to put this thing in, the city has a little skin in the game, but we're going to make this a flagship and it will be the standard for how we build and maintain parks in the future. We're looking at that, we're looking at the science, we're looking very closely at the traffic pattern piece on this. It's going to get a lot of attention up there because we will not let this fail. And so you'll have police presence up there, you'll have animal control presence up there, you'll have the parks and the public works folks. If you want to, if you want to put some emphasis on an area and you want to get property values in the city, that's how we're going to get after it. Holiday lights, generous donation by the Stew's Foundation. We need someplace to put all the horrible holiday lights stuff. We've got to drag them, put them in the transit facility and it takes a lot, we're going to, we're going to do it right. We're also going to have a great place to put parks and recreation equipment down there. Have you out seen people waiting for the transit facility buses and waiting on, waiting there? A whole lot of places for them to be. We're going to, we're going to get after some quality areas for them to, so they can take share of that. We have a firing range that is located between the stadium and a school. Probably not a good idea, okay? It was built way back when, I got it, and I just have it on top of it all. You know, we have, we have contracts with Mercer County, Tazza Academy, of course, Bluefield College, they use it, you know, they use it for the school system. We're destroying our football field because we're practicing on it, we're doing everything on it. And so the intent is, we're going to move the police firing range, which is a very inexpensive thing to do, to another piece of city-owned property out John Nash, quite a distance away, and we're going to put a practice government. So we get off of our $750,000 artificial turf and quit destroying it and do it right and also get, you know, shooting next to the school. And then public works. They've been sort of a redheaded stepchild of the city for quite some time, so the ramp is horrified at their areas. We look at our equipment and we have no overhead cover for it. So all of these snowplows and stuff that are supposed to be working and now they sit out all year long when they're not out there because they have no overhead cover for it. There's a little stream that runs right through the middle of our maintenance facility as our guys are working. It's an ocean nightmare that we're going to get corrected, let's hunt them, let's get them fixed, and Junior and those guys are, the board is committed to getting behind it. We just found out about that. Okay, I slowed down the comprehensive plan just a little bit because at its thangs in up at the state, you know, there's a lot, a lot of good work that some of the coals up there do, it's going to have some second, third order effects on how we want to go. What I thought we needed to fix when I first got here, I thought my direction was due north, and now it's a little bit north, northeast a little bit, so my direction has changed a little bit because make sure, slow down, we'll get the comprehensive plan right, we'll make sure it's all integrated. We're talking a lot more like I told you with the, with the power companies and the utilities companies, making sure that we're nested in their plan, and we're going to put together a comprehensive plan that gets after the long-range type of projects. I will tell you that Josh touched on it for a little bit, but we're sitting on the most strategic piece of property for the Norfolk Southern Railroad. And I'm telling you that that's an economic driver that is there. There's Alan Peacock and a couple of other guys have said, "You need to take advantage of the international and domestic lines crisscross in Redfield." We need to create an environment, shape an environment that gets at least a bulk terminal facility in there, and if not, expand it up to a true intermodal facility. You see it, a big, a big car thing coming through there on a daily basis. That's why CNG is so important because that's what the trucking agency is moving towards. And so instead of paying $4.25 a gallon for diesel, I guess it's down, it'll come a little back up, you're going to go to natural gas where you're paying a buck twenty-five a gallon, get them off the interstates. Trucking agencies moved their routes based upon where CNG stations are. There are only three in the state of West Virginia, and they're not anywhere near here. The closest CNG station is in Roanoke and Charlotte, and we're going to get after that. And so now trucking will bring that revenue, bring that, shape that environment for Bluefield. If, if I had a lot of money and I win lottery and stuff like this, there was one area I sort of wanted to focus on would be College Avenue. Someone said to me, and I wish I could remember who's, someone visionary said, "If we lose College Avenue, we lose the city." And it's the most highly-traveled residential street in the city. That's why there's no lines running through the middle. It's a residential street. And if we were, you know, I was king for a day, we would come up with a concept that you milled it, you repaved it, you rebuilt sidewalks, and you rebuilt the curbs and managed, and sort of said, "This is what we want to get after from a city standpoint. This is what, this is how we want homeowners to eventually repair their sidewalk. This is what we want to get to the city." I don't know how to get there yet. And we always say, you know, under-promise, over-deliver. This is a, this is a wish right now, but I'll tell you, it's, I think it's a need. It's something we need to get after, and from there, I think that you would see it, you would see the city span. But right now, College Avenue, one of the few flat places people are running to go around this place, but it really is sort of the center of the city, if you will, an area we need to focus on. So we're going to, we're going to look very closely at that, at that piece.
All of this is available on the website. If you go to cityofbluefield.com, underneath the news section, there's a six-month review top news story. We'll have some more information coming in the Bluefield Daily Telegraph, it'll be on radio active later this week. Interact with us, let us know what you think. There's more information, I know there's a lot tonight, but trust me, there's more. But we want to make sure that we're very interactive with you about this data and interactive with the board. So do take a look at that, it's on there, there's more information, so do take a look and see what you think. Mayor?
We allowed an hour and a half for this meeting, and so we're at an hour and 29 minutes, so we've got one minute for questions. Actually, great work. I hope my bladder can survive. But what we'd like to do now is open it up for questions, concerns, thoughts that you might have. If you would, come up to the podium and give your name and address and, you know, not literally, but fire away, we'll, we'll do our best to provide, I mean, I don't know how you'd have any questions after that, but please.
How about a kudo to the sanitation department? I just recently, I, I just recently, most mornings on Thursday morning, I'd be taking out my trash, I'm right up here in the opposite corner on here in Jefferson. But I forgot because I don't get up early anymore. Well, thanks last Thursday, forgot, so I went down there, they came over and got my trash out of my trash can.
Great, thanks Jim. Any, I mean, please feel free, we'll, we'll, yes, sir?
Ron, I don't see, but Ron Davis, I live here on Washington Street. This is all a break, Colonel Wright, I admire you. I think, if you have a brother that served in Iraq, Colonel Wright, my son served with Colonel Schwartz, two tours in the Southern Iraq, and he's on sports now. How is all this going to be funded? I'm going to pick any kind of, most of the cities are going to pick this up or they're on assistance. How are we going to fund all this?
We talked about the fee piece, we're taking a very close look at. Obviously, we have to deal with the constraints of our, of our budget. We are going to get after the way in which we collect the monies. Right now, it's pretty painful, especially on a fixed budget, that getting someone to put 20 bucks away several months in rows so they can pay their quarterly fees. I think it's unanimous that when we got back, it was go-to monthly, ability to pay monthly, you know, type of thing.
Well, by paying monthly, then you can raise fees and gradually, well, we won't notice them if they're quarterly, they're raised, correct?
Take a look at, I guess, look at it from a different perspective. I guess that there's that piece. We can continue doing the work, and you'll watch this, you'll watch this city. We can continue doing the order and you'll watch this, you'll watch this city go into twos. Right now, the city is about a million dollars in the hole and we're taking from other places we should be investing just to pay for the police and the fire department as we have not adjusted fees. I mean, we just saw the county do it. And when you take a hard look at it, if you're gonna get a financial picture of where we are, that, those monies that we should be fixing infrastructure and, and, and creating an environment so that other people wanna come live here and do business, and you don't fix that, then you will just disappear into Bluefield, Virginia. So you, you gotta, I, I, you're right.
Dane, let me, uh, Mr. Davis, I would say, um, number one, living in the city of Bluefield is a deal. I mean, with, with the, with all of the things that Dane has gone through and, and all of these folks in their departments and the things that are provided, trash alone, living in the county, you pay that much, uh, as, as most people pay on a quarterly basis. And, and we are gonna be taking a look at, at, at fees, uh, as we move forward, but certainly we're not looking to put these things on the backs of, of the, of the people who are here. We're trying to grow our tax base. We want to, uh, raise property values, bring more people back to the city and, and with that, businesses. And, and that's how, you know, the cities, we're okay. I mean, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna tell you that everything's great, but it's not as bad as some people want to, to believe either.
I, I love it, I've been here 22 years and we need to be 22 years ago because technically we're in a shape we're in right now. This man's gonna do a good job and, uh, we're, a lot of people are behind him here, but we've gotta do it in gradual way because a lot of people can't afford this. And, uh, right now, I mean, I've got children behind me that's coming to my house to eat because they don't, their parents can't afford to eat or they're not, they're spending their money on something else. So we do have a problem here and I don't know that all the residents here can take any more expense with the high utility bills, the fees, the high water bills, the high sanitary bills, and, uh, I know I can't handle it. In fact, we've gotta home somewhere else and I, I've lived here 22 years, this is basically my home, but I know that we just can't take on too much more.
Okay. Anybody else have, uh?
I need to ask one question.
We need to, what's your name?
The registry's Barry, only one view avenue, the one that goes to the, to the left that only has two houses. There's a view that runs all the way on the other side, and a four-story house. But anyway, there's two houses on our side. My garbage is picking up every two weeks because I recycle. That helps me, I would assume it helps people pick it up, but it also helps the, the cycle off. Plus, I thought you could always pay your taxes every month if you wanted to. I thought that was a good choice in case we couldn't afford to do it in three months. I thought I could always go for one to, and say, do you take this monthly? Do you take this monthly? Is that not still the case?
It is. Those, those services are available, but it's not the standard for the city and that's, that's kind of the question that we've been asking is what does the standard need to look like? You can pay all of your fees upfront for the year and we would love you for it if you'd like to do that, but it is an option, but we're looking more across the, the base as a standard and want that to help us.
Okay, then if you bill monthly, does that not increase, uh, the postal, the money to do, the work to send it out monthly? Is that not gonna increase or is that?
Yes, there'd be a natural cost in that, but we're also looking at ways to cut that back as well. We're really looking at online payment options, we're looking at ways to really encourage folks to, to pay right upfront. We're also looking at ways for, uh, folks just to, uh, and I lost what my last point was.
I've got, I've got the last point for you, Josh. One of the problems is with quarter, quarterly billing is somebody might decide they don't wanna pay and we don't know about it for probably six months because our, our billings, um, are, are only every three months. So, um, and, and sort of to Mr. Davis's point, the city, if we got everybody to pay what they were just supposed to pay, we'd be doing a lot better. And, and we have a lot of problems and, and have, have to send things out for collections. And this way, if we do it, if we bill monthly, we'll know quicker where the problem is and can get after that faster and, and maybe be able to collect before it becomes such an amount of money that people can't, you know, if they get, say, three, three quarters behind on their, on their payments, that might be three or $400. But if we catch it a couple of months, two, three months, then maybe we can correct it and, and get everybody to pay their fair share.
But you, you already get billed monthly for your garbage pay, right? Uh, that's, that's quarterly. Where's Sheshia? Sheshia did not look at the bills in my house.
Anybody else, uh, want, like to make a comment or has a question, concern? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Paula Carricker, I live on Union Street and I doubt-
What was the name again?
Paula Carricker. I doubt very seriously that this is gonna do any good, but how would you all feel knowing that there is a drug rehab going into, right behind your, your house in a residential area? So, I, I'm totally opposed to this, this was just sprung up on us and now we're stuck.
Ma'am?
Yeah, you can. Please.
There's been one there. That, that same facility was a rehabilitation center for females. It's now just being converted to a male facility. And, and I can tell you, and, and actually, you would be welcome to come to my office and I can show you the numbers, okay, for where we have, that, that's a problem area. Living on Union Street, you know.
It is, it is, and we have been in the area.
We have numerous, numerous complaints in that area, but none of which have ever come from that facility.
That's true.
Okay? So I think that not only will you see an improvement in helping the community with that facility, you'll see that that facility itself will make your area better than what it is now because even when those people slip up, they don't do it in their own backyard, okay? They go somewhere else. And I've had a lot of experience with, you know, with, with the people that'll use this facility. They're, they're not gonna wanna do those things in their own neighborhood. They're not going back to door, they're not going across the street. When they screw up a save, they go somewhere else, okay? But I, I honestly think if, if you don't ever want to be a part of that solution and help of these people, our neighborhoods are only gonna get worse than they are.
But don't you think it should be in a commercial area instead of a residential? There are a lot of children on Preston and Union Street.
Are you committed to any of these facilities in other cities?
No.
They're all residential areas. And they usually, in the end, bring those neighborhoods up better than what they were when they were. Uh, I, I just tell you that it's gonna be, it's gonna be a win-win situation in Preston Street.
Ms. Carricker, as the mother of a drug addict, an active drug addict, I can honestly tell you that I've been to these places, been to these, I've been at this for about 12 years now and I am so grateful that there's one, gonna be one here and it's gonna be in that neighborhood because my first thought is that's gonna help that neighborhood more than anything. I really do. And believe me, dear, I've been through this with our, we've been through this with our son after about 12 years and he's been in about five different rehab. And the best situation for the neighborhood is to have something like that there because I think it'll tend to run off some of your bad people in that neighborhood. I, I really do.
It's not Mr. Dillo.
All right, Chief, Chief Dillo, I don't think his family members can handle drug addicts.
Well, I don't think so either.
I mean, I, I do have first-hand, first-hand knowledge.
Let, let me just give you an example. And he won't find out until he tells us, because he's, he loves to work in these situations. I have two brothers. Both have had drug-related issues, two different paths, same result, one has a medical, you know, injuries, got addicted, one loved art, you know, playing some. Uh, both have been through programs. Uh, you may know my youngest brother, his name's Jason Dillo, who runs the, um, Johnson's Chapel Celebrate Recovery. They are very successful. Uh, they, they had a program there, I think, the second to none. And then the hidden place, which is what we're talking about here, my old brother went through that program, huh? He went through 15 years of drug use. Uh, he loves to blow, life's important to keep him alive and learn to feed himself. Okay? He goes through this program, he now is remarried, works, contributes to society, uh, has a new child. I mean, just completely, uh, a person that you would think don't need to be around, for one that you would be happy to live in the neighborhood. And all is a result of this type of facility. So I think you'll see that it's gonna be a balance to, to our whole area because a lot of times you have to move these people away because you don't have anywhere for them. It makes it difficult for their family, you know, to communicate to them. And this is, this is a need, we don't need one, we need this one.
Yeah.
Because we have a epidemic in our area of this law.
That is definitely a need. I was just, I was just curious, have you ever had any problems yet with what was there already? In fact, they had preschool, they had, um, the, they made the standard wheel, the wheels, they did those there. And I mean, it was, it was really an asset to the community, to that particular neighborhood. Then I read this and we were never even notified of it. I had heard about it and then I heard, oh, it was going down to the BDMT building on the avenue.
Mr. Mayor, Chief, is, don't I read correctly, this is not gonna be a therapeutic, not gonna have any, nothing to make, that's not any-
Oh, not, not at all, yeah.
... purely shelter and-
That's it.
And, and not violent, uh, drug offenders and-
That's what I was concerned about.
Yeah. And, and these people that, um, and really, even if the city, if, if the five of us were totally against it, it, it's not like we could change it anyway. It's more like, let's embrace it. Um, but the people that are given the opportunity to go to this facility, they don't wanna screw it up because their alternative is jail. They don't wanna screw it up. These are people that, that have the chance to, to kind of redeem themselves and I think we need to embrace it.
Okay, well-
But, but thank you for your comments.
That makes me feel better.
Anybody?
I'm very passionate.
All right, thank you.
I'd just like to add something to, uh, the lady that's asking about the monthly-
I wanna say something, I'm not against the fees or the monthly, I afford the monthly. I got in trouble with my fees too when I went to Street State down there, they put me out.
Okay.
But I afford the monthly, I think that's the easiest way to go. Of course.
Okay, Billy.
And for the lady or anyone else that, uh, concerned about the extra cost on getting the monthly bill, one way that everyone can help with that is to sign up to have your, your bill, whether it's monthly or quarterly, have an email too. That saves us the postage, plus it's a benefit to you because, uh, you have, you don't have to worry about it getting lost in the mail, plus you can save it, it comes as a PDF file, so you can save it on your computer, you already have easy access to it. But if you're really interested in helping the city save money, sign up to have your bill's email too.
What about ACHs? Can they do that as well?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so we, well, we can do all automatic draft if, if you want.
You know, I'm, I play my game so I'm on every day up there.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Noel DeHoski, I'm from College Avenue, along with my neighbors here from College Avenue. I was ecstatic to hear you say that there was some comprehensive plans that were forthcoming on College Avenue because that was the reason we're here. We're having some pity issues and we're having curve issues and we would really love to see that comprehensive plan sooner than later. Next one other thing I wanted to say, I was ecstatic over the fact of my pet peeve at the maintenance when I first came here, was not having the shelter for that, with our bus station. So, thank you, hats off for that.
Thank you for bringing it here. And I was gonna say, thank you, that, that was something that you shared at our first conference, that we were glad to be able to instruct the show progress on.
Great, great. And one other thought.
Okay.
The city of Bluefield is phenomenal and I love to see the progression that it's having. I've only been here a year and a half, I see it progressing, I am so encouraged by that. Though one thing I've asked, I haven't heard, heard anything mentioned on that, I think, is, um, the regular people who are here. Bring some people in. If we're going to, to build up Bluefield, let's build it up.
Pete? Need to introduce him?
Yeah, he's, he lives on Oakdale Avenue. Uh, you've done a great job of addressing the problems of rental properties with what you've done with the program. Uh, are there any thoughts of, of how you're gonna work with the folks that are doing the rent-to-own programs in our city that in many cases are worse than the problems we have with rental problems?
Well, early on, Pete, I've, uh, had lunch with, uh, lunch with the mayor and nobody's taken advantage of that in a while, so, uh, you know, certainly, uh, keep that in mind. But I met with some of those folks and, and there's some that do a really good job with that, there's some that don't. Um, you know, maybe Lori might wanna, uh, address a little bit to that, but, um, I, I think my, one of my biggest objectives when I ran for city board was for property values to improve. And, and that's a, that's a key area and, you know, we're, we can't eat, what's, how's the saying? How do you eat elephant? One bite at a time. So I think we've taken some great steps, um, you know, uh, Josh, go ahead.
You know, I was gonna say, a lot of those individuals are participating in our tax sales for Mercer County. And part of going back to that slide where I was talking about us taking participation in that, sending a clear message that it's unacceptable, you cannot buy properties to push people through and when they can't do anything, let's, uh, that, that's one of the initiatives that we're starting with. There's still more evaluation on what we can do, um, it's just the first bite of elephant that we're taking, but sending a clear signal about these tax sales is, is a big part of how we're starting to, to resolve the problem as best as possible.
Yes, sir.
I'm Bob Little and I live 12th Ave, College Avenue.
And he has a beautiful yard.
I've lived there for 51 years. Uh, is there any plans to upgrade the sewer system in front of College Avenue later with that being repaid? Probably doesn't, doesn't seem to be.
The sanitary board is aware of some issues on College Avenue, obviously. There are plans, you know, one of the things is budget. We're currently doing a sanitary sewer evaluation study throughout the city that's being performed by Frachman Engineering. Uh, that study will tell us where we need to focus our efforts to get the best return on investment.
Another problem that we have, uh, there's a block that doesn't have a head rain, uh, because of sewer water.
That's partly a stormwater issue and also a sanitary issue.
There shouldn't be stormwater in sewer.
Well, there shouldn't be, but you can't wreck it all at once and then your, the elephant comment will apply in this instance too. I mean, we've got a system that's citywide is in very poor condition.
A hundred years old in some cases and terracotta pipes.
So where do you fix it?
They've studied on College Avenue for the last 15, 16 years now.
The study should be completed in June and so we'll have, their, their report should indicate to us where investment and where the projects will get us the best bang for our money.
And just to introduce everybody, Stephen Duffy and I know he's been introduced, but he's head of our Bluefield Stormwater Board, also sanitary board employee, uh, does a great job. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Juanita Gray and I live on Memorial Avenue. I'd just like to make a comment that possibly on the quarterly statements that you send out for our fees, if you could put a little note on there somewhere about people, when they mow their grass in the summertime, they put it out in the street, which works out the storm right there. A lot of people don't get the newspaper, they don't know what's going on, maybe you could put a little footnote on that deal. They really, uh, there's sometimes it's really bad. I mean, not on our street, but I've noticed it on the road.
I think there's some initiatives with the Stormwater Board to do some, uh, hang tags, some, uh, more direct-
Another thing I would like to say, I hope you have the money to do the clean sweep because I think we really do need, if, if, if all the-
Well, we are going to do it this year. Is that right? Okay. And we'll work on that as we move forward and try and figure out what's the right, what's the right solution. But it is very expensive, but we are going to do it this year and we'll have a... Thank you ahead of us.
I'd like to ask a general question about the clean sweep. What is it that you could add for clean sweep that you couldn't normally put out? I mean, really...
You can't just take, you can't, it's really not safe. I can put that in your garbage, aerosol and stuff like that. You're rebuilding a bathroom that might be a toilet. You stored in your basement, I don't have.
You stored it, you stored it in your basement. First step, step that you would normally have to make a...
Transition.
Or a special request.
We're losing our audience. Thank you all very much. We're going to quickly let each director say a word or two and thank you all. Mike?
These meetings are real instructive to us. And it's very important that you as citizens participate in. We have a few people here I'd like to recognize that participate regularly, frequently, and help us. First is Al Hancock, who gently encourages us to be more effective. Art Wright, who is the historian for the city of Bluefield, lack of another term, who helps us, who reminds us of where we came from, with an eye toward helping us know where we're going. I see Pete Sternlaw back there. He's never reticent about voicing his opinion about our progress or my own. And we need, we need these things. We need you people to help us out. A pat on the back is not, but more importantly, is a friendly reminder that we could do things better, improve our situation. Finally, we're unique in that we have a chief of police and a city attorney. Both of them served admirably as the city administrator. And that's unusual and that's, I can't tell you how helpful that is. Both of them, we are forever in that debt.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for coming out. We have been looking for a crowd every time we have a city hall. And I think this one has been the largest. Thanks. And to our city manager, he really just gave you a toll of everything. He really just gave us a small top of what he has done for us. And he has so many bright ideas. Please, let's stand behind him. Please, let's not try to run him off. Give us some time. He's only six months old. Remember, he's still crawling. He's going to get up and walk soon. And I'm sure you're going to be right behind him to help him out. Thanks again for coming out.
If he's crawling, they all experienced it bad about what's to come. Ellen?
Oh, well, Ellen, you first run for office, you have ideas in your head about what you want to do. And then when you get elected and you see what's really going on, you have different ideas. It may seem a little tainted, but I, after we got in office, and we're pretty cohesive bunch, even though the office is crazy, I realized that what we really needed to do was hire the best people we could hire. And, you know, we already had some great people. And initially I thought I just wanted to see them happy again. And we have wonderful people already up there, so why worry? Well, we needed a wonderful leader. Unfortunately, I didn't know we were going to hire Hurricane Dane. Sweeping through at this pace he swept through. But I think if we all just hang on, it's going to be a wonderful ride. And I know that the staff I've seen, they are now coming to work happily with a purpose, a goal, a plan, and it is indeed wonderful. Especially that we've stolen so many good people along the way. I didn't even know you were a thief. The thief of Baghdad. So, hang on, it's, as what's her name said, it's going to be a bumpy ride.
Well, unlike Ellen, I'll be brief.
That was brief.
That was brief. That was, I'd rather be brief for Ellen. Looking around the room tonight, I can't help but notice what I see in the crowd is citizens, employees of local businesses in Bluefield, and local business owners. And I'd just like to point out that this board up here consists of the same people. We feel like we know what you want and we're working very hard to see that we can get some things to develop for you, as you saw tonight. Thank everybody for coming out. Have a great turn.
Just briefly and then we'll close. I want to mention a couple of organizations in Bluefield. And I'm not going to mention them all that are in this kind of category, but it's some that I'm personally familiar with. And just great things that are in the community that need awareness, that need, you know, citizens to know that good things are going on. The Wade Center, it's a great organization. I'm involved with that. I've been on the board for a while. And they do great work for kids in our, in our city. Bluefield Union Mission, obviously fantastic organization. And really, everybody knows about Craig and his team there. There's so many good things going on at the Bluefield Area Arts Center. Is that the right name?
Yes, the Bluefield Area Arts Center.
Arts Center.
Great, great. You see it the opening right.
Betty Brainard is the executive director there and she is doing a phenomenal job. And there's just a lot of enthusiasm back in that, in that building. The Bluefield Preservation Society has really gotten the ball rolling. It's kind of jump-started a few things that has, that has gone on. And on Saturday, the vice mayor and myself attended the Kings Warriors, which is a semi-pro soccer team. They had a press conference and announced that, and they made their home at the Mercer County, or the East River, I should know the East River Soccer Complex. Thank you. I've only supported it and worked with that for about 12 or 13 years. So, the East River Soccer Complex, they made their home there. And Dr. Bloom, I think Monroe County, I think, something like that. But anyway, phenomenal individual, benevolent. No admission to the home games for the Kings Warriors. Their season starts towards the end of May and they do a lot of great things in the community. And both Barbara and I were there. I'm just going to close by saying one thing here. I mentioned it before and Dane talked about it. Getting the right people. If you think of the city as a bus, and there's a book, Jim Collins wrote the book, Good to Great. And you think of the city as a bus and it's getting the right people in the right seat on the bus and then getting the bus going in the right direction. But you can't get the bus going in the right direction until you have people in the seat, in the right seats. And I've got to tell you, there's enthusiasm throughout the city, but really, there's enthusiasm inside city hall. And, you know, I see smiles on people's faces that I used to see grimaces. And yet Dane holds people accountable, but, you know, we want to be held accountable. We, and I'll tell you what, he knows how to pat somebody on the back too. I mean, I saw Lori line up like a Christmas tree a number of times and Billy and, you know, just, it's just phenomenal to see. Last thing. We don't have everything we want. We're not going to be able to do everything we want to do. But we have a lot of great things that we need to focus on. And like the Good Book says and Joel Osteen says and, I don't know, whoever else you might want to listen to. But be thankful for where we are. I mean, we're going great places. We're going to get there. We're going to, you know, some of the things that grocery stores and, you know, some of the other things that we could look at and say, well, what are we going to do about that? There's so many good things going on and I just would ask you to get behind that. Support us, help us if we get off track, point us in the right direction, hold us accountable, pat us on the back, really don't pat us on the back. Pat the Public Works Scout on the back. That's who really needs to be patted on the back. Yeah. So, anyway, thank you all so much for being here. And we look forward to seeing you at our next board meeting or our next town hall meeting. And thank you.